I call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. We always begin with public input. There's anybody in the public that has a comment? Okay. Is everybody joined?
Anyone with a public comment?
Any public comment? Hearing none, we move on to student report. And we are joined tonight for the first time, I believe, by Vanessa Steinmeier. Steinmayor, mayor?
Meyer.
Meyer, Steinmeier. Welcome Vanessa.
Hello, nice to meet you all. So for academic matters, we are now halfway through quarter two. So we're kind of at a midpoint in our academics, so there's not a lot going on. But we do have a DECA competition, which is our entrepreneurship club, starting tomorrow, with individual competitions being tomorrow and team competitions following on Wednesday. And this event is being hosted at the Boxborough Regency Hotel and Conference Center. And then for fine arts matters, the Mean Girls Show by Maskers has started showcasing their hard work. They've already had two shows this past Friday and Saturday, with the next shows being held on Friday the 13th and Saturday the 14th. The lead roles are played by Olivia Rowe and Yolali Aganis. And some student feedback I've gotten, though I haven't been myself, is that the sets were beautiful and the dancing was outstanding. And then lastly, for this category, National Art Honor Society has a meeting this Wednesday to solidify some mural plans to beautify our community. And then for notable athletic matters, winter sports have officially started this past week, with preseason tryouts and scrimmages happening across teams. And our first track meet is this Saturday at the New Balance Indoor Track in Boston. And for other matters, a couple of weeks back, we had our Spirit Week and Pep Rally, which were both very successful events. Everyone was excited and showed their North Reading spirit. And we only have nine days left until Christmas break, nine school days, which is exciting and seems very short this year. All right, and then for my student work report, I want to go over a project I did a little while back in Calc BC. We had a real-life application of derivatives project, where we were trying to find the optimal volume of a box. And what I really liked about this project was that it drove home the idea that derivatives aren't just numbers on the page, they're actually a tool that we can use to figure things out, which really taught us how to apply what we were learning. So I'll pull it up. And then, do I just show it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so first I found my original volume as like a baseline for what I had to start.
What class was this again?
This is AP Calc BC.
Okay.
And then found my original volume equation. And then this is when I used the derivative to find the maximum possible value that could be changed by changing one of the variables, which I chose to be height. And then I solved for maximum volume, volume was 5,400, where my original from before was So that's how I solved for it algebraically. And then we also learned how to solve it graphically, which is good because I had two ways to get the solution, which is great for like knowing how to do it two different ways. And then my percent increase of volume was about 2.33%, so not that much, but it did change. And then that was pretty much it. And I really liked that project because in math, I kind of find it hard to make concrete like conclusions about what I'm learning, but this really helped me figure that out.
Yeah, and real-life applications of it. Excellent. Comments, questions?
Of course.
That's always good for a comment.
Yeah, well, I, a personal story for me, math was always tough. Even with a family full of engineers and scientists and people who love math, it's always tough until calculus, because it's visual.
Hmm.
And I got it. And so for me, while you're starting to talk about it, I'm like, it just brought me back. So I had a huge smile on my face, like, oh, that was that my senior year, I got it. It like made sense for exactly the reasons you're saying. I could see it and I could apply it.
Hmm.
Whereas everything else was abstract.
Hmm.
So I think that's phenomenal. Are we going to be seeing more of you? This is great.
Um, I think I have one more.
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
Good problem to have, we have a lot of people in the rotation.
No, it's great. The other thing I'll say is this is a tough thing to do, speaking in public and speaking in front of other people. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, great job, and I am still learning how to apply any of that, so this was a, this was a nice experience.
Have you done integrals yet?
Oh, we're doing it right now.
You're going to get even more application and you're going to learn it.
Yeah.
If that was good, to Jeff's point, when you start applying this stuff to real-life things, and you realize how complicated math, but helps you solve real-life problems, it makes it simple, so.
Yeah.
That Newton was a smart guy.
I know, I know. It's like they knew what they were doing. No, great job.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll just, I mean, I'll just add, Mean Girls was great. I got to see it both nights already, and so it's.
Don't spoil it.
Go if you can.
I thought it was great.
Yeah, really good performances. It's good to see them change this night overnight, too. Friday night was opening night, and you know, they have their light kinks and stuff like that, but Saturday night was super smooth. One random question more for Dr. Daly, I think, but like, could we get, I've asked her this before, but I think nowadays when we're talking about budgets and everything, I would love to see like a percentage of students that are doing something each, each, you know, sport season, like what percentage are playing sports, what percentage are doing clubs or activities, what percentage are doing fine arts. Like I know at the middle school, 93 kids went out for the cast and, for the cast alone, and they had so many crew that they did two different crews. And so I think it would just be good to be able to put that out to the community, like how many, what percentage of people are taking advantage of this, if we could get that.
Unique individuals or just total?
I don't know.
I knew that was going to be the next question.
Probably both.
It's much easier to do.
Probably.
Only if you're going to apply a derivative to it, Dr. Daly. Only if you're going to apply a derivative to it.
If I can tell you that 93 people went out, 73 did this.
Right.
But then if it's the same kid doing three different things.
They get together and their shadow grows.
Yeah, whatever we can get easily enough, whatever, just to show that there's a lot of use to do this.
And the latter's easy.
So that'd be good. And so Vanessa, thank you, great, great time for the first time. And so I've been asking everybody that's new here, if you can maybe just tell us a little bit about yourself, like what are your interests, what do you do outside of school? I mean, you're a senior now, so what you're, you know, maybe what your plans are next year? I mean, love to hear, meet you, meet you a little bit.
Yeah, so I'm planning on, or like when I'm, I'm applying to colleges right now, and I'm applying for environmental engineering, because like I've fallen in love with the environment, and I definitely want to do something in that regard. I'm not completely like determined to do the engineering side, I might switch to chemistry or something.
Okay.
But I don't really know about that, but I definitely want to do something related to the environment. And I love hiking.
You mean something like the outdoor ropes here?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, or well, I'm not like in the outing club, but I, I do, I just, I do it with my friends a lot. I love Franconia Not State Park, it's my favorite.
That's great.
Yeah. What else? Oh, I, I also love art. I'm super into like the art side of clubs here. I'm, I'm like, my two main clubs are National Art Honor Society, which I'm a vice president of, and I helped start for this year.
Nice.
And also World of STEM, which I also am a vice president of, and also started this year, so.
I'm guessing that's how Succi met you.
Yeah, Succi.
So did, did we get a lot of, we had to vote on the National Art Honor Society, I think, and so I'm curious, so that did start up this year?
Yes.
And how many, how many students are in it, do you know?
Ooh, off the top of my head, it's like quite a few, 20-ish, something like that?
Very good.
Yeah.
And is it only, what, what ages, what grades?
Only high school, but freshmen and all the way to.
Freshmen or seniors?
Or senior, yeah.
Good, that's excellent.
Don't discount environmental law.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I am taking AP Gov this year, too, and I also like that. So I do think I could do something with policy, too.
Well, I've got a good friend who, who is JAG for Coast Guard, and they handle most, they prosecute and deal with environmental issues, so.
Yeah.
I'm not pushing it, but I'm pushing it.
It's in my file cabinet.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Lawyers on this board, so there you go. Okay, well, thank you very much, and you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but if you need to get going, that's perfectly fine, too, and everybody usually just leaves on the night.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you Vanessa.
Good job.
Okay. Since we have guests, we will jump ahead to new business first, and so I think Cynthia Conant and Gina Sacco are going to come up and give us a presentation on student services.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for time this evening, to be able to be here and present to you. I was recalling my presentation last year, and Mr. Buckley, I remember you asking me, who is on your team, Cynthia?
Yeah.
So tonight, I'm excited to have Mrs. Gina Sacco with me this evening. She is our Assistant Director of Special Education. She plays a critical role on the team in terms of IEPs, compliance, supervision, and evaluation of staff. So based on that question, I decided to have her join us this evening, since we are going to be talking about special education updates.
Any relation to the Bruins coach, or no?
So I always just like to frame my presentations just with explaining what the Office of Student Services is in charge of. It's a little bit different in every district. Here in North Reading, we oversee special education and related services, nursing and health services, guidance counseling, and 504 plans, ensuring the provision of educational services for homeless students. And tonight, we are going to be focused on special education updates. There have been times in the past where I presented on general education initiatives or social emotional learning initiatives. Tonight, we're going to be talking about special education specifically. So my goal for the evening is to first start with out-of-district placements. Really what I'd like to do is walk through the process of how do we get to an out-of-district placement? How does a district incur a cost? What are those costs? I'd like to share with you some trends that we're seeing with out-of-district placements, and then talk a little bit about how are we responding to the trends that we're seeing. Then we're going to change gears and talk a little bit about the new IEP form. You'll hear from Mrs. Sacco, an update in terms of the district's progress with implementation. And then we'll wrap it up with an update related to our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. So those are the goals for the evening. We're going to start with out-of-district placements. Before I jump into this, I just want to kind of frame this part of my presentation by saying, out-of-district placements serve a very important role in education. They make all the difference for some students. There are some students that require an out-of-district placement, and we will see them thrive, we will see them learning, growing. Those are all wonderful things. So I just want to be clear on the messaging of this evening's presentation, although a piece of what we're talking about include costs, I don't want to, you know, sort of have the messaging be around costs. It's not about costs. That, that's just a logistical part of the process of an out-of-district placement. So when we think about out-of-district placements, everything in special education comes back to compliance. And we spoke about this a little bit last year in my presentation, about compliance serving as the building blocks for everything that we do. So the Department of Education, every three years, monitors our compliance in special education. So when I arrived to the district in 2015, they had identified 10 areas in special education that were found to be in partial compliance, which means we were doing it some of the time, maybe not all of the time, maybe we needed an updated procedure. So slowly but surely, we started to take a look at those 10 areas in 2018. We brought that down to three areas of partial compliance. And then in 2021 and 2024, we've now have had two consecutive reviews where we've been found to be in full compliance across all standards. So once you have your building blocks, your foundation in special education, it really allows us to think outside the box, develop programs, consider new ideas. Without compliance, you, you can't build. We always have to start there. So this is something that we're very proud of. Mrs. Sacco and I work very closely with teams and developing workflows and ensuring that we have checks and balances in place to make sure that our workflows are effective and people are following through. So big thank you to all of our teams out there for focusing on compliance and helping us to achieve that for two consecutive cycles. So understanding out-of-district costs, how do we incur out-of-district tuition costs? So at the very basic level, an IEP team determines that a student requires a specialized placement due to their individualized learning needs. That's one way. A second way might be, we might have a student move into the district from another town, and in that other town, that IEP team convened and previously made that determination. That becomes our cost. We might have a unilateral placement, which is when a parent makes a decision to place their child out of the district. What happens next? Once this happens, we are required to pay the costs associated with tuition and transportation for the student to access their education in the out-of-district placement. I just want to pause for one second here and see, any questions about procedurally how an out-of-district placement happens?
Well, I have many questions. I'll, I'll start, well, why don't we just go one by one?
Sure.
And so the, the first one makes complete sense to me, but and then, but the IEP, each year, I know there's a meeting for the IEP. Would a placement be determined each year?
Correct.
Or is it only each three years when there's a revaluation?
So a placement actually happen at any time throughout the course of a time that a child is on an IEP. If a student is struggling, best practice would be that the team convenes, we might propose updated assessments, and as a result of those updated assessments, the IEP is amended, and based on what is in the service delivery, that's what drives the placement. So we look to see, can we provide these services that the team has just deemed necessary for them to make progress? If we can't, we have to send referrals out. So it can, it can happen really at any point along the way.
And then, I mean, and again, just to clarify, like, if the needs need to be met, you either have to send them out or make the adjustments to be able to provide it in district?
So we're going to talk about that.
Okay.
A couple of slides.
Just, just to clarify, again, I, I did see the other slides.
Yep, yes.
And then, so the second one, if somebody moves in and there was a placement before, sort of the same question, like if somebody comes in mid-year, then the next cycle, I assume that we would then again, like their, their team would come together and see, can we meet this in the district, are the needs still the same? But they, they would do it, that we would just take over after that, but there's a period of time that we audit, we just take whatever the placement from the other district was, and then a new evaluation is done within district, I would imagine?
So if a student moves in, registers, has an IEP that calls for an out-of-district placement, we are required to immediately place them in the out-of-district placement, unless the team convenes, and this has happened before, where we have had a family who has said, well, we think our child might be ready to be educated in the district. We were having a rough time a couple of years ago, we think that may have resolved. So we have done things where we said, okay, well, why don't we give it a try, let's try for eight weeks and see, you know, how this goes. So we either have to immediately place them, or in a circumstance where we have agreement among all the team members, and again, parents are very important members of the team, we can think outside the box, try and, you know, implement to the greatest extent possible the IEP that they come with.
Yeah. Unilateral, sorry, I'm just going to run through everybody, but unilateral, literally a parent can just say, I want my child to go to the school, and they, and they could do it?
And then they.
On their own, or, yeah?
So they would then pay the cost for the school, so it's sort of, they're taking the initiative to place their child in an out-of-district placement. They also incur the costs. They do have the right, they notify the district, they have the right to proceed to the BSEA if they would like to sort of say, we believe that the district didn't move quickly enough, and our child really needs this now. And that would have to be sorted out through the BSEA or through mediation. And it might end up that the BSEA might say, no, the district had the least restrictive environment, you know, with this IEP, or they might say, no, the district, you know, you were behind this a little bit, and therefore the P is correct, so you need to pay the costs for this unilateral placement.
Right, and then, can you, can you give just a brief overview, and I know every case is slightly different?
Yeah.
But sort of, and, and I will just reiterate exactly what you said in the very beginning, you know, our job in the district is to educate every student, and some of those students require $500,000 to educate them, and some of them don't require anything more than the average student. But, but just for us, because we are the budgetary aspect of this, I would, I know every out-of-district placement is different, you know, but can you give us maybe a little bit of an idea of like the range, the averages, just?
Sure.
So we know?
So if we think about our educational collaboratives, SEEM collaborative, North Shore Educational Collaborative, we are member districts there, so as a member district, you have a reduced, you pay a reduced cost for tuition. So that tuition for a collaborative-level school as a member might be around $55,000 a year. If we were not a member, that might be closer to $75,000 a year. That would be for a collaborative. Then you move sort of up in intensity to a private day. In a private day placement, then we could be looking at tuition ranging anywhere from $75,000 a year to $110,000 a year. From there, we talk about residential placements. Residential placements, that's when we have a student who's living at school, attending school there. This is when we're talking about very, you know, significant needs, you know, it's removing a child from their home and, and they're living at the school. So depending upon the type of placement that we're talking about with residential, that could be anywhere from $170,000 a year to $550,000 a year. Really varies depending upon the needs of the child, the type of program that the student is in, whether or not they require additional staffing plus the out-of-district placement.
And there's also then transportation, that's probably on top of that, or is that inclusive?
Correct, on top of.
Transportation is on top of that, and we're required to educate students until what age?
So special education students have an entitlement until the age of 22.
22, yeah.
Not all students necessarily stay until 22.
Right.
When students receive their, their diploma, that usually ends their eligibility and entitlement for special education. We have some students who require more explicit and direct instruction going along to 22.
Any other questions that I didn't cover?
What, what, as a percentage of the three categories for out-of-district placement, what, how's that breakout look? Is it like 90% below 1, I would imagine? I mean, where, where, how's it kind of ballpark?
Yeah. I would say probably 80% collaborative placements, 10% day placements, and a handful of residential placements.
That blended two different things then, so.
That's true, though, yeah.
Because I think he was talking about like how they get there, whether it's, so but you're saying 80% are usually in like, are in collaboratives?
Oh, are you asking?
He was talking about, I think he was talking about how it's placed versus.
Collaboratively.
Is the vast majority that the team is determining it, or is there?
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand how the.
Yeah, no, I would say the vast majority is the IEP team that's determining that need. Yeah, thank you. No, I thought you were asking a different.
You started, you started there, but, but then your other question you were answering was about 80% are usually collaboratives, and then a few, some day, and then some, a few residential placements, okay.
I mean, I think a common question I get around the community, so I think it'd be worth bringing up here, is if you look at a cost, let's say you're $55,000, $75,000, even the collaborative, plus transportation costs, from a, from a budgeting perspective, a common question we get is, well, wouldn't it be easier to just hire literally a full-time person to be in North Reading Public Schools to do that work? So can you explain a little bit?
I can.
The thought behind that, and, and just, I think it's probably a question that y'all get across.
Well, again, that's, that's probably Cynthia, next slide.
If you're going to cover it later, then great, we can.
Yeah, we're jumping ahead.
I think we're about two slides away from that answer.
Yeah.
So I can either answer now or.
No, no, keep going.
Do it in flow.
Okay.
I always jump ahead, too, so.
No, great questions. I think, you know, my, my goal tonight is really to provide a full understanding of the context, because I think we use this word a lot in the community, and it's important to me that people understand what it means, you know, to, what are we talking about when we say out-of-district? What does that mean? So, thank you, these are great questions.
Except for Tim, I'm totally kidding.
A little hold for the.
Totally kidding.
So looking at trends, so we have the information columns on the left, and then visually represented on the right. So as we can see, we are trending upward. In 2015, we had around 30 students. We were hovering, you know, 30, 34, 36 in that area, you know, all the way until about 2023 is when we really started to kind of head upwards, and this year, we have the highest that we've had since I've been here. And I think, you know, there's a lot of factors that play into this trend, and theories and hypotheses about why. But I wanted you just to see visually, sort of, this is the way that we're trending.
If we saw a chart of other districts, wouldn't it be a similar trend?
Yes, yes, rounding towns.
And do you think, it's an impossible question to answer, but I'll ask it anyways, do you think this is going to continue in the future? Is, I mean, from what you're seeing this year, or things like that, or do you think this is maybe a peak that hopefully will come back down? Because Mr. Klee was presenting a lot about how we're after COVID, how we're covering and things like that, so I don't know if this is another thing that maybe there'll be some recovery, maybe we've hit the peak, or is this just the continuation and it's going to continue to go on? Do you have any idea?
It's a great question. It's a difficult question to answer, because it can be very unpredictable. You know, if we have some students move into the district, that's just something that we can't plan for. I think that we'll, we will likely go down by a couple, but we might then add a couple and perhaps stay around the same. I, at this moment, present day, standing here today, don't necessarily anticipate that moving into next year, we would be upwards of plus eight as we are this year. But again, I can't, there are some things that we can't plan for and that we can't predict.
Thumb in the air is good. That's, I think that's what we're looking at. So I have a question, supply-demand, is there, is there capacity for outplacements, given if this is the trend and everybody's seeing it, I have to assume there's a capacity issue.
I'm so glad you asked this question. It is such a challenge now to place a student at a district, whereas, you know, several years going back, we could pick up the phone, we could, do you have space? Our collaboratives always had space, private day schools had place, you know, openings. Now we have programs telling us, we have a waitlist and we have no idea when there's going to be movement.
Yeah.
So that is absolutely, there is definitely a supply-demand issue happening, so.
That's really.
There's one other variable, too, is staffing. So.
Yeah.
A lot of those places also don't have the staffing to run the programs, and there's more students that want them and space, so it's certainly something to discuss in the collaborative system.
Well, then that, then that, I assume would back up to us, right? Because then that gets into staffing with adjustment counselors and what have you here.
And so I know that we, you know, fortunately, the town, another building came online at Martin Flanagan this year, so there was more revenue, which we were able to use specifically to address special education costs, because you see the plus eight this year.
Right.
And if I recall, even though there were 37, we had budgeted for more than that, but it wasn't still enough. So I guess my question to you, and if you know, I mean, I know that Dr. Daly is working with, with the administrative team right now about trying to do a budget for next year, but, I mean, where, do you think we should be planning on like 45 then, that you were saying? Like, you know, a couple going off, a couple. I mean, where, do you think we should be planning on like forty-five then that you were saying, like, you know, a couple going off, a couple coming on?
Yes.
Is that what we need to be planning for?
Yes, again, that being said, there are factors that are beyond our control, move-ins, and also just, I, I generally speaking, in out of district placements, there can be variability in how, you know, people are doing and sometimes an unexpected change in placement occurs, so the number might stay the same, but the cost will increase. And that's the type of situation that would create that scenario where we see the same number of students out, but the amount that we're spending is higher. So there's, there's a lot of variables, so.
We're not holding it to it, it's just, it's just to give an estimate.
Well, and, and we saw that with the busing as well, that was the other part of that, that the busing cost went up by twenty-five or thirty percent or something this year, and so do you think that's a one-time adjustment as well, or do you think that's gonna continue to happen with the higher spikes?
So we have one very high spike. It was fourteen percent in our private day placements. That happened, I believe it was two years ago. And we haven't seen that high of a spike, but definitely it's, it's trending higher than the, the average, you know, three percent type of increase.
So more than two and a half percent, just to throw a random number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
The cost of fuel and transportation isn't going down any time soon, unfortunately.
Any other questions about the, the data?
Has the supply and demand of the outplacement, the price of the schools gone up commensurate with that demand, meaning are we paying more for tuition for out of district placement just because of the demand issue?
A little bit.
If you have a.
Yes, yes, I don't know if it's directly correlated to the demand issue. I think there's a combination of things happening, as Dr. Daly mentioned, staffing, retention of staff in private day placements and out of district placements similar, similar to what some other districts are facing, not necessarily here in North Reading with teachers, but so that sort of higher, you know, annual increase in rate combined with staffing issues. I think it's a combination of things, so.
It'll be interesting, and this isn't, this isn't for you to research, it'll be interesting to see if tuitions for this across other tuition categories, you know, whether it's higher education or special education have gone up at the same rate. Like, is this, is this the thing that's going up faster than, say, and it's not comparable, but is it going faster than like college education or whatever, is it going up? Or are all tuitions going up at the same rate?
That's an interesting question.
It'd be interesting to, to map the slope, to bring it right back.
Right, right.
Out of the, from the thirty-seven to the forty-five, were most of them new people moving into the district?
So I wanna just be careful with confidentiality.
Oh, yeah.
Those pieces, a piece of that number. I would say we had some students move into the district. We also had some students where the IEP team did some additional assessments and at the end of the year determined that they needed an out of district placement. And a piece, an important sort of piece to understand is if a student goes into an assessment period later in the spring, we can't predetermine the outcome of the meeting, so we have to wait to see, you know, what is the recommendation of that team going to be at the conclusion of the assessment? So that's another variable that makes it difficult to predict these numbers, particularly when we're talking about that timeframe. And that came up for us last year.
I guess, my, my only other question would be on the, the reverse here, like, I, I think, I could be wrong, but I think a lot of parents would love, love their students to be able to be educated within the town. And so can parents refuse out of district replacements? And, and if that happens, like, is it just that the district just does the best they can to educate within the district if, if there's a need that's beyond, but the parents say, I don't wanna do that?
Yeah, so i- in a case like that, we would reach out to the supports that are in place or teams when they're in disagreement. So what you're describing is a scenario where the district might be opposing an out of district placement and the parent is saying that, that doesn't align with my vision for my student, for my child. So in that scenario, we might say, okay, why don't we try and go to mediation and see if we can come up with a mediated agreement where we try and meet in the middle somehow? Which that could involve, you know, maybe we think about pushing in some additional support, depending upon, you know, is that appropriate, is it student-centered? In a more sort of extreme type of scenario, if we felt as though it was detrimental to the student, to their education, we might need to proceed to the BSEA and say, we need, we need to go this route because we believe wholeheartedly that this is the level of support that the student needs to access their education, for which they have the right to do. And it is the district's responsibility, so. But we're always, always, always trying to utilize mediation, facilitated IEP team meetings, we try to really educate parents about what options are out there and what we can do when teams are in disagreement, because there are lots of supportive avenues that we can pursue, so that we can, you know, Mrs. Sacco and I always have the goal, sort of coming back to, it's really important, the relationships that we have with families in special education. Going through hearing, really, going to court, going to the BSEA, going all the way through something like that can really be detrimental to everybody. And, and by the end, everybody is, has, you know, lots of feelings about what has happened. Not necessarily great feelings. It sort of closes the door to any opportunity to say, hey, would you like, you know, once you've developed some additional skill, do you wanna have your child come back? All those things sort of, the doors close because it's a very emotional process, very draining financially, emotionally, all, all of that. So we are always working very hard to try and utilize every other option available to us to come to consensus.
I, I have to think that doesn't happen very often because of the attention that gets paid to avoid it.
So two, two very quick questions. First one, BSEA, what's it stand for?
Bureau of Special Education Appeals.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, I, I got special education there. Yeah, I got special education in the middle, I wasn't sure of the B or that, that was board, bureau, okay, and then in, in terms of a budgetary stamp, like, the bureau obviously requires legal costs, I imagine, as well. When we're seeing more out of district placements, are we seeing an increase in, in legal costs as well that we should be planning for on the budget?
So not necessarily.
Okay.
It, it really depends.
It might not be, I'm just wondering what we're seeing, just when we're thinking about building a budget for next year.
Right. It's rare, we haven't, it's rare to go to hearing, that's what I'll say. If we were to go to hearing, we would be looking at approximately forty-five thousand dollars, I would say, start to finish in legal fees, but then also if we didn't, if we didn't prevail, we might then be looking at, you know, additional fees on top of that. That circumstance is
Yeah.
Very rare, so.
But I mean, but, but even getting before that, I imagine we have advice of legal counsel and things, I'm just, I'm just wondering when, like, cause when we had twenty-eight versus forty-five, you know, I just imagine that there's probably, I'm just wondering if we need to, when we're thinking about ways to cut, sometimes you trim budgets like that. And this is another thing, we're just for the more, for the committee, thinking about like, if we're seeing a lot more out of district costs, sometimes saying like, oh, well, we can cut the legal expense a little bit, but this is where we might need that for advice of counsel here and there, so.
Right, and Mr. Connolly and I always look at, at that trend year to year specifically, at the legal side of things and how much have we accessed that and, you know, now having been in the district for a while and having worked with our legal counsel for a while, you know, you get to the point where you, I, you kind of have a sense of how they're gonna advise you and we have a great working relationship, so it's not something that jumps out at me that I would say, oh, we absolutely need to, you know, push in all this money to that line. That's not, I wouldn't say that that's what's happening.
Thank you.
Sure. So as we talked about, we have experienced an increase in out of district placements as well as students requiring additional support within their out of district placement. So additional support in and out of district placement. The team convenes, they determine the student needs an out of district placement, they're outplaced. That team convenes and says, the student really needs more support than what we have, which means we might, the out of district placement might need to hire a one-to-one staff for the student, or a one-to-one nurse for the student. It can be anything like that, which then creates more of a cost. So that's the situation I referenced a little while ago, where the number might stay the same, but the cost is higher. That would be students changing placement or needing additional support in their current placement, if that makes sense. And I would just say, generally speaking, you know, there is definitely, we're seeing a lot of, you know, mental health needs, school avoidance issues, some, you know, social, emotional needs and some very complex medical needs, I would say as well. So these are some of the things happening that contribute to how we're getting here, how we got here, what's happening to students, you know, in their out of district placements, why they might need some additional support.
Has there been any, so just from a funding standpoint, right now, all of this is on whatever school district they happen to be living in. And again, it's, it's always struck me as a little bit unfair to districts, like, that all the costs, especially in particular residential placements, you know, and I'm just wondering, and again, everybody needs to be educated, we have to take care of them, I'm not trying to say they shouldn't get the services, but when the services fall just on one district as opposed to, you know, the state issue, has there been any legislation introduced in the last couple of years or any talk about changes to how special education, at least the most severe residential placements are treated for, in terms of budgetary, or is this, is it going to remain just solely on the individual districts?
So I haven't heard that it's not going to remain on the district.
Okay.
There's circuit breaker funding.
Right.
But beyond that, I'm not hearing that, you know, there's gonna be a substantial change that would result in, you know, something other than the district being responsible.
I would imagine that wouldn't start hitting until this, if this trend keeps going up, that may.
Well, even if it was just, I mean, I get your point. Yeah, e- even just the, the residential ones, where they're not, you know, in the schools necessarily, just, again, it's just, it's just hard for one district and what we have seen in the past, and I'm not saying we've seen it here recently as much because, you know, our, our numbers are similar to state numbers, I think, in terms of number of students on IEPs and out of district placements, I think it's all very similar, but I've heard in the past, you know, people wanting to come to the district because they were receiving good services and that's one of the things where if you do a good job, you know, dealing with students with special needs, more people want to come here, I mean, I think the, you know, the socioeconomics of North Reading makes it hard for some families to come here, so I don't know that's, that's the easiest thing for people to do, but I hundred percent know there's people that come here because they think their students' needs are gonna be better than other districts and so you could see a situation where some districts have, because they do a good job, they get a lot of move-ins, which really, you know, challenges the budget.
Sure. I think too, we, we spoke about this a little bit last year as well, but just for folks maybe that weren't here to hear me say this, the strength of your special education program is really how strong is your general education environment? So when your general education environment is strong and students can access support at the time they need it, so there's adjustment counselors available, there are interventionists available to do some tutoring. That generally results in lower referrals to special education because they can get the help that they need. So rather than saying, oh my goodness, you know, we're really worried about this student, we have to put in a referral and there has to be a disability and, you know, we're gonna put them on an IEP, it, it, it really goes back to the strength of your general education environment, which is, you know, Dr. Dale, Dr. Daly hears me say this a lot, you know, having those tier-one supports, having adjustment counselors available for all students, so that, you know, we have a student who experienced, let's just say, for example, you know, the death of a family member or anything like that, and they need a couple of counseling sessions. If you don't have that available, then the only option becomes making a referral to special education or putting them on a five-year court plan. It, you know, I think that's a, it's a serious thing to take a look at because you're identifying a child with a disability when what the child might need is a few sessions with an adjustment counselor to talk through.
I couldn't agree with you more, the challenge is that when you look at the numbers, the math is saying that everything that we're seeing here is going to continue to challenge the general education
Yes.
budget, right? So we're seeing double-digit increases as a percentage of the number of students outplaced. I would presume north of two and a half percent of the cost of tuition. I would assume well more than two and a half percent of the cost of transportation. So the only place to take it is from general education, which then in turn increases the number of students that now need to be outplaced. So we're, I mean, I view as we are right on the edge of a diving board and there may not be water in the pool, depending on how deep that is right now, right?
It can feel like that.
So what, what could, what can we as a district or how can the school committee support ways to, I, we, we obviously can't solve the trend, right? That's not what we can do, but are there things that either you feel the district or the school committee can do to assist in trying to blunt that blow? To me, it seems inevitable, the math basically says it's inevitable.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, it, all roads lead back to general education and having our, you know, really strong frontline of adjustment counselors, interventionists, having that support available to students when they need it. Once we get into special education, there are lots of laws and nuances where, you know, there are stay-put laws, meaning, you know, a child and a family can say, district, you might be suggesting that my child come off of this IEP, I don't believe that they should. And under the laws, they have a right to remain with those services unless we decide to go to the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, go to mediation, work it out some other way, so. Really, it's about strengthening general education so that referrals that come through are appropriate referrals and from there, that's when we have, you know, an accurate population of students who are getting the correct type of special education services as opposed to, you know, this is a student who couldn't get something at the tier-one level.
Dr. Daly?
Yeah, I, I would just answer to continue to listen to us, you know, I listen to my principals who are speaking for their teachers and my directors. The optimal class sizes in special edu-, in, in general education. Sometimes a student just has a question or a need that a teacher with twenty-one, twenty-two kids can answer, twenty-five, twenty-six, it's, it's not the same access. You know, continuing to support those counselors, the adjustment counselors that we didn't have to cut last year, we still didn't get to add one, we're still working towards one at every building. And then our, our interventionist, that, there's a reason why those are the needs that when we talk about restoration, that our principals are advocating for those first and foremost, and it, it is, solving a situation upstream actually saves a ton more downstream, so. Continue to support us and help.
It's always hard to quantify that. You know, when, when we say, oh, by spending this, we just save whatever, cause you don't know.
Well, maybe, but I mean, we were at twenty-seven percent of the budget last year, so I'd be curious, and maybe we don't have the numbers yet, but are we still at twenty-seven percent for this year? Cause I bet you it's higher than that.
For twenty-seven?
Of our total budget.
For special education.
Special education. Where that, that is tangible.
No, but I'm saying, but, but, yeah, but if we go back and say like, oh, well, we had fewer places, we did this, whatever, it's hard to show, it's hard to show the negative, hard to show that by spending this, we stopped this from happening.
I suppose.
But.
It's theoretical, but, but people, you can understand it, but.
But you can make a correlation.
And also to say, the complex medical needs are still out there, obviously that's not gonna solve every situation. But it can solve a lot of them, and, and from what I gather, from what I hear, what comes across my desk, these increased mental health needs, school avoidance, those are the ones that we really think if we can address that early on, we can keep more kids here, and I know we're gonna talk about programs and different things coming up, so.
Yeah, and school avoidance, are you just talking about meaning, meaning like they don't wanna be in, in a school environment to do it?
So they have a lot of anxiety, they can't get to school, parents are struggling to get the student from home into, you know, the school building. You have that happening over the course of a few days and then a week, and then that anxiety just. You have that happening over the course of a few days and then a week, and then that anxiety just grows tremendously. And then, you know, it doesn't take long for that type of a situation to escalate into, we haven't seen this kid, you know, despite our efforts with making phone calls, reaching out, doing a Google Meet, just, you know, kind of, you know, I'll, I'll say to people, "Let's set up a Google Meet" and just play, like, try and play a game or do something non-academic just to reengage the student. Let's see if we can just re, you know, start with the basics of building that relationship to see if we can then slowly, gradually try and get them back through the door. Because those, those situations can be very, very challenging because that anxiety just grows and grows and grows. And then it's, it becomes very difficult to get them through the, the doors of the school building.
Okay, are any out-of-district replacements virtual?
So there, we have a couple of out-of-district placements that I would say they do a very good job with kind of pivoting for students. So they are in person, but for a student who might be struggling with school avoidance and anxiety, they're able to pivot to a remote model very effectively. So there is one school in particular that we have seen kind of handle that really well.
And so I guess to Tim's point, I know we're jumping ahead again, but like, is, if we started seeing a few of those, is that a group, a cohort that we could build and maybe look at like having a virtual school option to address some of those?
I would absolutely be in favor of that, absolutely. I think, you know, in special education, it's having choices, having the option to think outside the box. And okay, if, if our student is struggling to get here, why can't we make that pivot? You know, what do we need to do that? And do that needs assessment to really understand what is needed for us to successfully implement something like that and keep them on par, making progress and accessing and in touch with their education.
And I know, I know we're going to switch the programming, but we've created a few programs here that have absolutely kept kids and parents will say to me, "My child would not have graduated if not for this program." And those are the programs that I, I am concerned about when we talk about staffing and cuts.
Any other questions before I go to the next slide?
Probably, but go ahead.
This is what happens when you're the only thing on the agenda. You get to go first, but we want to be together for a while, so.
You know, we have cookies here, thank you.
Yes, cookies and everything, so.
They won't eat themselves.
Yeah. Perfect. So how are we responding to this trend? So we're seeing a lot more in terms of surrounding towns kind of partnering together. Lots of emails go out with, you know, different staff from other districts saying, "Do you have a program for students who have a specific learning disability? Do you have room in your program? Can I come see your program? Can we tuition a student into your program?" There's much more of that happening now where we have, we're relying on each other, partly because of the supply-demand issue that is happening and also just as a way to be thinking about cost. Again, not to say that out-of-district programs are not needed or not appropriate or anything like that, but just an aspect of out-of-district programs is the funding. And so by partnering with a surrounding town, it does two things. It meets the needs of the student, it provides an option, it keeps them a little bit closer in some cases to their home district, and it's usually a little bit more cost-effective. Utilizing our educational collaborative SEEM and North Shore Educational Consortium. They're both exceptional programs, always willing to support us, think outside the box. If we, you know, we have a couple of students that might need this, they will try their best to try and identify that staff and think outside the box about how they can support other districts in the same way. This year, we are partnering with the Massachusetts Rehabilitation Commission, where they're coming into the high school and they're doing explicit instruction on life skills. Later in the spring, they're going to be partnering with us for developing some internships and looking at job readiness. And these are some pieces that pop up when we looked at some data trends over time. These are some pieces that were coming up as being identified concerns for parents. So when it was time to graduate, these were some of the things that came to the surface as well. I don't think my child is ready to graduate yet because they need some more life skills or, you know, they really need an internship. So we're, we really took that feedback, partnered with this agency that they are free of charge. They support students 14 and older, and so far, so good. They have been coming in once a week at the high school, teaching life skills. And as I mentioned in the spring, we'll be looking at developing some internships with them as well. We're constantly assessing our in-district programs to identify ways to strengthen our current programs and then exploring opportunities for new program development. So one example of how we strengthened one of our in-district programs was, it was a collaboration between myself, Dr. McKay, Mrs. Sacco, and we took a look at our program over at the Hood School, and we added a general education teacher to a substantially separate special education classroom. So substantially separate means that the student is in their classroom, the smaller classroom, for more than 80% of the day. When that happens, you can see how easy there can be a disconnect between what's happening in general education and what is happening in the substantially separate classroom. So we kind of combined a couple of positions and brought in a general education teacher to address that so that our students who are in this program have a general education teacher to deliver that content to them in the setting where they're comfortable, where they're able to tolerate, you know, receiving the instruction. That has been one of, I would say, the most impactful changes that we've been. And that sort of came about through, you know, all of us putting our heads together and thinking, you know, "How can we solve for this?" And I always, anytime I have an opportunity to talk about it, I always try and share that. We got great feedback from the Department of Education when they came in for their compliance review on that specifically. They hadn't, they said that they had never seen that type of a model before. So we're always looking at what we can do to do, to do it better and make it stronger and help our students always stay connected to that general education content.
And a question on that, another question and a comment. So first question, is one of the goals of that possibly to help them to maybe integrate in the future more as well? Or is it, is it just focused on this year or is it also focused more on the future? Because if you go sub, you know, to a separate group and you're completely isolated, it's going to be less likely you're ever going to go back to the general? Is that a piece of it?
Yes, so ideally, we love it when we can get our students in for inclusion. Sometimes there are just factors that make it a little bit more challenging. It's too loud, there are too many students, they just need that smaller setting. But that allows us to do both, deliver the content, but also continue to try and build that readiness skill in students.
Second comment is, or question is, you mentioned some districts placing for tuition, you know, students. Do we, do you have any idea of how many students we have placed in our district right now that are tuition paying?
We don't have any right now, no.
Okay.
Nope, we don't.
So everything we have is just for us? We sometimes have other districts that we can place students with, but we don't have any within district?
We don't have any, right.
And then, and then the soapbox moment is just for anybody listening because sometimes people start talking about, you know, student-to-teacher ratios and saying like, "Oh, it's this, whatever." These are the programs we're talking about where, you know, if there's three, if there's three teachers or three adults in a room with five students, that's why the ratios are what they are. And we've tried to say this before, but I don't think everybody always, you know, puts that together. But just to bring it back, the idea of having three, three adults in a classroom with five students, that's five students that are not out-of-district placements, which, you know, as you heard, are, you know, if it's a day placement, $75,000 to $110,000 each student. So just to kind of, you know, bring it back from the budgetary standpoint for people that are, that are listening.
I appreciate you bringing that up because that, that optically can look one way when, you know, when you have that understanding though, as you're saying, that's, has saved outplacements, tuition, transportation, and most importantly, has kept students here in their home district, in their community, with their peers. And, you know, that I think is most important. So I just want to talk a little bit about developing new programs. So sometimes it can seem like, okay, we have, we have these seven students. Why don't we just hire two teachers and it would probably, you know, cost-wise, you know, equal out? Why don't we just do that? So there are a number of things that you need to have in order to develop a specialized program. So you need to have a cohort of peers with similar profiles. So there are times where we are in situations where we might have a 10th grader who is struggling with school avoidance, a 6th grader who has some complex medical needs, a 2nd grader who has, is struggling to learn how to read and has a very severe specific learning disability. That's not a cohort of peers that doesn't align to FAP, which is Free and Appropriate Public Education, which every student is entitled to. So particularly in a smaller district like North Reading, this is what tends to pose the biggest challenge. Because a lot of times we are in the situation where it, it might be a 10th grader, a 5th grader, a 2nd grader. It doesn't happen very often where we can say, "Oh, we have these three students. They're within 48 months of each other, they all look like they require the same types of interventions. We can build a program here." Whenever we find that, we always work to create a program. So the cohort of peers is very, very important. Having appropriate staffing, which again, this, this is an issue in terms of people applying for jobs. We hear a lot from the principals around having postings out there that people are not applying to. We hear this from out-of-district placements as well, not being able to staff their programs. Then, you know, also we have curriculum needs that we would take a look at depending upon the program and appropriate space. But again, the, the greatest challenge I will come back to in a smaller district is peer cohorts and having, having that similar profile of peers. Because you can't develop a program with that scenario that I described where we have a 10th grader, a 6th grader, and a 2nd grader, all with different issues.
So with privacy concerns, could you reach out to other districts and try to find a cohort amongst, in the district? And if you could, what's the next biggest issue? Is it the space issue?
Yes.
Okay. So you could, you could reach out to Reading and Middleton and, and other ones and say, "But, but we don't really," I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, "but it seems like we don't really have the space right now to build too many programs." Even if we could find, you know, we have one student there, we find three other students, a group of four, we have three tuition-paying, you know, placements, we move it within district, but we don't have the space at most schools or all schools?
I would say most schools. That being said, I, I always say this with when, if we have everything else and we're stuck on space, I always say, "We can, we can find space, we can find space." Like it, people, we can change offices, we can think outside the box. Maybe this area that was once serving as, you know, somebody's office, this is going to be a classroom and then this is, you know, I, it's, it's one thing that I feel very strongly about and Dr. Daley has heard me say this, you know, when, if, if space is the only issue, I'm determined to, you know, find the space. Because if we have the cohort of peers and we can create a program, we will, along with Mrs. Sacco, who is always very helpful to me when we're in these types of situations, thinking outside the box and finding solutions.
Are any of the collaboratives trying to, with, with the supply and demand issues, are any of the, are any of the collaboratives trying to put together peer cohorts amongst different districts to try to solve the problem? Or they only try to do their own with, I'm just trying to think like who is it that would be putting these cohorts together? Because if they, like, if the SEEM collaborative knew there was like three different districts that were all trying to get the same thing, are they communicating with those districts to say, "There's this group and is, does anybody have space for it?" Or are they only really focusing on the students that do get accepted at that collaborative?
So SEEM and the consortium are great about sort of reaching out and saying, you know, "North Reading is, you know, dealing with this, does anybody else have a, you know, solution or a, you know, cohort or, you know, anything?" Like they are great about working with us and trying to help us come up with solutions. Some of what we bump up against too, where in this district, when I think about our strongest program, we wouldn't be able to tuition in another student because we're at the max number of students. So you're always having to work within the legal requirements for in-district programs as well. That's not always the case, but from time to time is the case. So that's usually, you know, when we're reaching out to other districts, it's usually, "Do you have space within, do you have room?" A lot of times we hear, "We don't have any room, but we'll let you know if, you know, something changes." Or, but the collaboratives, they're exceptional with communicating with us, helping to kind of put districts together who might be facing the same issue or have similar needs. So yes.
So I guess pulling on that, knowing the challenges, just try and think of ways that you can try to attack the problem. I'm, I'm certain there are surrounding towns that have very similar budget challenges to the town of North Reading and reading the newspapers. Is there even a notion or even the exploration of saying? I understand you, you've got that balance equation, right? Basically, for me to take somebody in from town A, I mean, somebody from North Reading has to go to town B potentially, right? Is there the notion, are, I mean, are there similar peer districts where we could look at it and say, "North Reading has a strong program A and town A has a strong program B, and we put all the chips on the table and say town A gets these profiles and town B gets it." I mean, is that the level where we could potentially go? I mean, at some point, something is going to have to move, otherwise, I guess I'm not sure where we go next, right?
I really appreciate, appreciate that you're thinking about it to this level. This is what I was hoping to be able to achieve tonight with this presentation is just to be able to kind of have this level of dialogue. And I think more and more districts are partnering together on all sorts of things because of the supply and demand issue that Mr. Friedman brought up. That combined with just this need that we have to support our students.
It's kind of making another collaborative when you think about it, right? But, I mean, desperate times.
Yes.
I mean.
Yeah, we do, I would say we do this all the time. And we have, you know, job-like groups, I mean, we have the boards that are superintendents and we have curriculum superintendents, directors of special education. We have our cost-sharing positions that we talk about, and we talk about doing it in these areas as well, even sharing a psychologist, sharing it, like, it comes up all the time about ways to, to share and to create programming either at SEEM or remotely, either model. We talk about it all the time because it, we are all in the same boat. And the staffing issues that we have here, it's really, this is a great slide because you need all four of those pieces to work together to build a program. You know, if you've only got two of them, it's really hard to make it work. So you really need all those pieces to come together. And the staffing issues, the collaborators are having, we're also having staffing issues. And it's, the word specialized is important there because when you talk about specific profiles, it does take that, sometimes it's the right background, experienced teacher to step in. Sometimes we have the person and we can have them pivot to that role. Sometimes you have to find that person and that's tricky too.
Absolutely. I think one, you know, just what I really appreciate about working in North Reading is there's an understanding from, you know, Dr. Daley, Mr. Connelly, Mr. Colleen, school committee, certainly Mr. Buckley, have always felt like there is a shared understanding of what our legal responsibility is to our students and doing what's right by students. So I just, I'm very, very grateful for that in the position that I'm in. So I think, you know, I just wanted to make sure to say that it's not always everybody's experience. So very much appreciated. Changing gears, if, are we, any questions?
I think we're questioned out, I think we're good. I'll, I'll just, I'll just add a, a general comment, and I was going to add this before. Just thanking you, I mean, number one, this is exactly the type of PowerPoint that I like because there's not too much on it, but there's enough information on it, it's organized. So very much appreciate the PowerPoint, appreciate you. I think that when we do the evaluations, Dr. I think that when we do the evaluations, Dr. Daly, every year, he is sure to point out that he does well because he has wonderful people that work with him. We see that as well, I see that personally all the time, and so, you know, very much thank you, and this, and Mrs. Sacco as well, about, um, all the work that you guys do. You know, it's, I mean, I've been chair for six years, and Dr. Daly, I can't remember him coming to me and saying, we have a big issue, we have a, you know, lawsuit or anything like that, and I think a lot of that just goes to the top of, you know, you addressing the issues and, you know, talking to parents, and so, very much appreciate all of your work in doing this, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I, I go back to, we have a, such a wonderful team here in North Reading, um, Dr. Daly, Mr. Connelly, Mr. Colleen, Mrs. Sacco, I mean, it's just, um, everybody's always willing to put their heads together and think outside the box, even if it's not somebody's area of expertise. And that's usually when you have the most exciting types of collaboration and new ideas come about, so.
Yes, Dr. Daly.
I could just to say, that slide, it's, I was going to share earlier about the number of corrective actions being at zero the last two years is, is commendable, um, even though we didn't quite get that designation, that was the word that we did have. But I think it, you know, not to downplay, because it, it's a lot, the process itself is a lot of work, but the reason why we have that is really, it's the day-to-day, right? So it's, it's not, we're not doing that for the, the submission for the, for that piece. It's the work that's done every day by the two administrators here and their team and all the teachers and all the paraprofessionals, everybody working together to implement the system so that we are doing it efficiently.
Can I just add, I think you mentioned earlier, Dr. Daly, that there were some programs that, like, you wouldn't want to see staff cuts to or anything like that?
Yeah.
What, what are some of those programs?
So the RISE program, um, our language-based program, um, our programming, our, so again, I sort of talked about having a strong general education environment. One of our general education initiatives is the BRIDGE program, which supports students who maybe have been out of school because of a concussion or a medical condition, and they need a gradual return back. It can also help with students who maybe have some anxiety, and it's one intervention for that type of scenario. So the BRIDGE program, while it's not a special education program, it helps us to have an intervention to turn to that's not special education. So anytime we're talking about the BRIDGE program, that's a program I would not want to see, you know, cuts happen to.
And that's school adjustment counselor, teacher, it's multiple roles that are there.
Yeah. And that's the investment that you put in to then receive, you know, then we're not dealing with an out-of-district situation, because we're able to successfully intervene using a program like that, that's available to all students. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Again, I, what's one else? I, I guess I would encourage you, as we're coming through, I think this will continue to be a very difficult discussion as we go through the spring, so I think as you formulate initial budgets and you think you understand where things are trending for next year, I know that right now you're not necessarily on the, the agenda for a, a future school committee meeting, or it's kind of an annual thing, but I think you, if there's ideas that you need school committee support, or, you know, you're, Dr. Daly, looking for ways to get out in front of what I think is going to be difficult discussions this spring, I would encourage you to bring them back and so we can discuss them as a committee and, and try to see if we can get ahead of any of it.
Thank you, I really appreciate that very much.
All right, thank you very much.
I will pass it over to Mrs. Sacco to talk about the new IEP forms.
So I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update on the implementation of the new IEP forms this school year. So we were very intentional in developing a plan for how we wanted to support educators and service providers in the 2023-24 school year, leading up to the implementation of these new forms. It's, it's not often in, in a district in particular in special education where we're able to start something together from the ground up, because people will come to you from different districts with different experiences. Even though the regulations require us to move forward in a certain way, people come in with their own experience and how they've been trained, so this is the first time collectively that we've all been able to work on something new. So we were very intentional in how we rolled out the training opportunities, starting with sending our district-level team to the DESI Train the Trainer Workshop last year. So that included special education leaders at each of the buildings. We wanted to be sure that we were cohesive in how the information was rolled out across the district to all service providers and special education teachers. So having someone from each building and then our elementary team chair, our secondary coordinator also attended, and then we partnered with an outside consultant to provide further training and support to the staff and also opportunities for the community to ask questions about the new IEP forms. Further, the internal teams at their own individual buildings facilitated mock IEP team meetings just to practice using the forms, going through, explaining the information. People, maybe a speech therapist was a parent in the meeting, or the special education teacher was the occupational therapist, so everybody could get a feel for what those different roles would look like with those new updated forms. And then we've also incorporated some software to assist with form development, so all educators have access to that as well. We've provided office hours for staff to come stop in, any questions that they have. And then, um, one thing that I thought was very, and Cynthia and I both thought was very important, was to ensure that each educator, as they moved through the development of their first IEP, had an opportunity to sit with us and go through them and feel comfortable with the changes to the forms, because the, the focus of these new forms really is on student voice. So we wanted to be sure that we were doing this well and thoughtfully. So to date, I think I have maybe three or four, um, educators left to meet with, but I've met with each special education teacher in the district, along with their district, with their building leaders in special education, and I've looked at every one of their IEPs before it has gone out to give them some input, to talk about the new pieces to it. And what I've, what I've found already, one of the nicer things for me is being able to join some of the meetings, and what's different this year is elementary students are being asked to join meetings, which has not happened before, and it really enhances the entire process, to see a 2nd grader coming to a meeting, talking about their vision, things that they really like about school, things that are hard for them. Um, it, it's just, it's just so nice to watch that process unfold with parents, students, educators, and seeing everyone together. And it's not often that you get to see that when appropriate, and if there are times where it may not be appropriate for a student to attend, we're working on creative ways to still incorporate their voice into the IEP process. So I haven't yet been, our youngest learners preschool can come to meetings, I haven't been to one of those, I'm looking forward to that one in particular, um, but I have been to a couple at the elementary level, and it's just been, um, it's been a fantastic experience so far. Feedback from families and staff is that they do find these forms to be more user-friendly, just the rollout of the information and how it's presented. So, so far, everything has been positive, and change can be scary, in particular when we've used the same forms for so long, so that's why we really wanted to be intentional and, and give everyone a chance to have multiple opportunities to work through this. So, uh, so I would say I'm very happy with how things have gone so far.
Is there one question on, you stole most of my question, but by, like, the students being involved, but are, at the elementary, is it, are the elementary students there for just a portion of it, and then they leave?
Yeah.
Versus all their students are there the entire time?
Yeah, it really, it's, it's a, it's a student-by-student decision at the elementary level, they come into the, usually the beginning of the meeting, and that's where they'll talk about, you know, something that they want to learn more about, something that they're working hard at, something that's more challenging. And teachers have found ways to talk with students in advance, so they'll meet with them ahead of time to say, hey, you're going to come to this meeting, you know, we're going to talk about you, it's all the great things that you do, everyone comes together to really support you in your learning. So they have already had some preliminary conversations in advance, just so that when they do come in, they feel more comfortable speaking. So yes, I would say at the younger levels, primarily the first five minutes or so.
How, how do we compare to other districts in terms of rolling this out? Ahead, behind, any sense of it?
There were some early adopters that decided to roll out sooner, but we talked a lot about that, and we just felt like we really wanted to be sure if we were going to do this, that we thought through all of the possible scenarios, all of the things and ways that we can support the staff. So now everyone by November needs to move into, um, the new forms, and the way that it rolls out is, we're not just creating new forms
Yeah.
from September on. Anytime an annual review happens, so that could be March for some families, that would be the first time that they see those updated forms, but there have been opportunities for the community to participate. We had, um, Dr. Reed come and present virtually to, um, the community as well, so.
I don't think you're giving yourself enough credit, I think you're earlier than you think.
We could be, we could be.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I will, I will say, we can't share other students' stuff, I can share my own student's stuff, I'll just say, I did one of the new IEP meetings, and the only thing that glared out as not being very good was the parent concerns, because it's like, all these other people had really thought out ways of saying things, even my student done, and it's like, what is a parent concern? I'm like, I just, I'm getting educated or something, it was just like a very short statement. I was like, oh, clearly I should have done more, because everybody else did a lot more than I did.
That just speaks to you, Scott.
That's, that's what it is. Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I think to, to your question too, when we thought about timeline for implementation, you know, change is hard, change is hard, and I think in special education, with the forms aside, what's often missed is that what, what's happening a lot is there's a lot of managing of emotions, because we're talking about students, people's children, you're, you're hitting right at the core. So there's a level of, you know, supporting and all of that that takes place within a meeting, so then you add a, a change like this. We were on the same page that this needs to be, you know, this year, not that we don't want to be an early adopter, we want, you know, to give plenty of time to support our staff, make sure they feel comfortable, um, because there's already a lot happening in an IEP team meeting, never mind, you know, now we're going to change the forms. So, um, that's why we were very intentional with, you know, not sort of rolling it out right away.
It takes more than just a quick read of who moved my cheese.
Yeah.
That's a very general question on IEPs, though, like, because again, obviously there's some IEPs that are very, very minimum, like, might be one service that's needed, there's others that are more extensive.
Yes.
You talk more broadly about, like, when an IEP is developed, like, how do we make sure that all the people that are going to be dealing with that student know what's happening? Is it, just, just for the layperson, like, is it that anybody that's going to be interacting with a child that has an IEP, at the beginning of the year, they're given everybody's IEP, is there a meeting? Can you just talk a little bit more about how that information is shared?
So, it, it's a couple of things.
Yeah.
So we, really, over, Cynthia and I talked a lot about something as simple as identifying your child's special education teacher as the liaison.
Oh, thank you.
That's just for, yeah.
And we didn't, and we didn't realize until a parent let us know, they weren't sure what that word meant, so we talked about what a liaison was, your point of contact. So at the beginning of each year, by the end of the first week of school, liaisons now reach out to families, identify themselves as the liaison, identify the type of meeting that's going to happen that year, um, and provide contact information. Any provider that has a role in that IEP, has a copy of that IEP, has participated in the meeting, is aware of their responsibility for transitions from elementary to middle. We start having those conversations next week. So I already have a grade five to six transition sheet set, I have a grade to eight, not eight to nine, so we bring everyone together so that the information flows between the levels. That, that's where you might wonder who might not know if this is their responsibility. Typically in the building, that moves just from grade to grade, but we're also very intentional in those, those changes from elementary to secondary and so on and so forth.
I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking, even as a teacher, like, if an IEP says a student needs to sit in the front row?
Yep.
You know, of class, like, is it just at the beginning of the year, teachers get the IEPs of any student that's in their classroom?
They do.
And they know that, you know, Tim can't pay attention, so he has to sit in the front row, and so...
Almost entirely accurate.
Yes, they do, they receive copies.
So the teacher just provided that each year, okay. Again, that's a very, very broad, though, that's what I assume, but it just, I don't think everybody understands what's, what's in there, so, okay.
For sure, definitely. I think a lot of things in special education, it's always so helpful just to ask some of these questions
Right.
out loud and just have dialogue about it, so that there's a level of understanding that can happen for people. There's a lot of acronyms and edgespeak and a lot of that within special education, so, I really do appreciate these types of questions.
Yeah. And, and actually, one, one quick comment about, because I don't know if you're going to be saying afterwards, but we're, one of our goals for this year is to try to do training for the school committee as well. And, uh, actually, Tim, do you want to talk a little bit about what we've been thinking about trying to do about special education and cost, or, yeah?
Sure, I mean, you're, you're going ahead on the agenda, but...
I know, I know, I know, but they're, they might not be here for the agenda, but just so you guys know what we're, and, and to see if you have any guidance specifically on what we should be looking into, but...
Yeah, and, you know, one of the topics that we discussed at the last meeting was, certainly our professional development and hitting that as a goal for this year, I think, and most of the, I think the committee agreed that a top priority for us, given the direction of special education and where it's going, is making sure that we're trained not only in the budget and financial aspects of, of special education, but also other considerations that we might want to make the policy as a committee. So really looking and talking with MASC on the types of training that we can get for, for this committee to, to, as we continue to, to look at this aspect of, of, uh, education. I think we're looking for more than that.
Well, no, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering if there's anything in particular you think that we should ask for, because like, we were, we were thinking a lot on the financial, some of the stuff you were just talking about, like, what could districts do, what could we promote, but if there's, if there's, you don't have to do it on the moment, but if you think of anything else in particular, but we're trying to make sure that we are as educated as the school committee could be in general about the needs, and so that we can help address them through policy, through, you know, cost planning, through whatever else we can do.
For instance, it's really easy to say, couldn't you just hire a one-on-one person to come do this job, right? And that was very, even that, right, understanding all of the different components for a various program is, I think, something that is, can be easily misunderstood, you know, I think it's an easy math equation. Well, it costs a hundred thousand dollars to go send your, you know, child to school A, spend a hundred thousand dollars on a teacher, or two paras, or, or three nurses, whatever, whatever you need to do, right?
That, that's just incredible to hear. I really appreciate hearing that. I mean, the more that we're, we all sort of have a shared common understanding of special education and what's happening, the better work we can do together. So I will certainly tuck that away, and if I think of, um, anything in particular, I will certainly reach out with Dr. Daly's permission. And I think the, the one thing that just comes to mind right away is just having, just an understanding of the foundation of it, what's absolutely required in an IEP team meeting, who needs to be, just some of the basics of how do you get an IEP, okay, and then what happens from there, um, which I'd be happy to be a resource in any way if I, if I could help with any of that, training, any, anything like that, so.
Thank you.
All right, and so the last piece that I just wanted to update you on was, um, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We have a transition in leadership happening. So again, I, I just want to say thank you to Kathy Buston-O'Donnell, I don't know if she's on the call, um, but she had been sort of taking the lead with this, um, parent council and is stepping down in January. We had a wonderful collaborative relationship, again, it's, I'm so happy and I have so much pride and gratitude to say it's been that way since 2015, when I came to the district, and, um, that, the CPAC was actually, um, the group that gave us the feedback about what is a liaison, you know, so we had people sending this email out saying, hi, I'm your child's liaison, and we had this feedback from the CPAC where they said, people don't know what a liaison is, and it was like, oh my gosh, thank you so much. So that really helped us to, you know, kind of clarify what goes into that initial email to help, you know, understand what a liaison is. We do have somebody, I'm very excited, I, I don't have permission, I think she's on the call, um, Mrs. Reynolds, if you're on the call, are you able to unmute for a moment?
Yes.
Is it o-
Hi.
Hi. Is it okay for me to share?
I'm sorry, cut out for a moment.
Is it okay for me to share?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, great, yeah, I kind of, I'm going to share. So Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds have stepped up and are going to serve as, um, leadership for our CPAC, and we are so excited. We had a meeting with the Reynolds and Kathy and myself and Mr. Buckley, and we were able to kind of talk about- of talk about the transition, the essential functions of a CPAC, how the CPAC functions and operates. So, we're very excited, very appreciative to Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds for being willing to kind of step up into this very important role. This is a very important group that provides support to our families, and we're really excited to have Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds taking over. And shortly after the call that we had, I was able to reach out to another parent who is interested. So, we're gonna, we might have another member as well. So, we're growing, we're excited, we have, you know, some new leadership happening. So much gratitude to our previous leader and so much gratitude to Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds for stepping up.
Wonderful.
And just a plug, a save the date, June 16th, that is the date that is reserved for the CPAC to present to the school committee. So, if any parent is on this call or listening and has interest, feel free to reach out, and I can connect you with Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Mira, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no, thank you, not right now. We're really looking forward to bringing CPAC forward, gain membership, and really see what we can do to move, move along forward for everybody. I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. And I know, I know one of the first things they want to do is have a sort of just like an informal meeting to get parents involved, so we'll try to.
Yes.
Make sure we communicate that out to everybody, because just as a reminder, any, anybody with a child with special needs is, is involved in that group, so just to make sure that everybody knows that that, that it exists. Yeah. Just to bring people together. I think part of the thing that came from the meeting was, in, in years past, there was, you know, there was the educational programming part of it, but there's also the connection part of it, where we can bring people together, because, you know, if you have a student that, it, it's scary when your, when your child with special needs is entering the school district and, or facing something, or going for transitions, and just being able to connect with other parents that have been through it before or are going through it at the same time is really important, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you. That'll be January 15th.
January 15th.
Great.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, as I said, it's always good if you're the only thing on our agenda, so. Okay, going back to the continued business. And, and is leading right before. Okay. We have the continued business, second reading of policy K D C B. Do you want to start with a motion and then do discussion afterward? And make a motion to accept for a second reading?
Would like me to make some-
One of you are, I mean, you, you two are the ones doing it, so.
Fine.
You're good. Uh, move to approve a second reading of policy K D C B.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Okay.
Discussion. Any discussion from last time?
No?
I mean, nothing to add.
Anybody else?
I think the-
Did we make any changes to it?
Any changes?
The only thing that I had asked-
The rogue period at the end of the, uh-
Yeah. The only, the only other thing that I had asked about was, like, just making sure that, like, future postings are there, but I think we had said number five.
Cover that, yeah.
So.
That was the intent.
Yeah.
If we think we need to clean a word up in there.
I'm fine. I'm fine with it. Any other questions? Noel, any questions or thoughts? Are you still with us, Noel? We're gonna have to do every-
Sorry, I nodded, I nodded my head. No, I was just trying to, uh-
Okay.
Do a visual cue for you. Um, no questions. Thank you.
All, all of our, all of our votes are going to have to be roll call votes, because somebody's not in attendance, so we're gonna have to do a roll call anyway. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, we'll do all those in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. Tim?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Pass is five zero. Thank you, Policy Subcommittee, for the work on that one. Why don't we go to number three and talk about the school committee media presence at the same time, because it's, I think, directly related? What are we, we're talking about the, the next steps already?
So, yeah, so, now, 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 we have an approved policy.
We have a policy.
Yeah, I mean, so, next steps to me, I, I think now, um-
Set up an account?
We, we, yeah. It's basically set up an account, and, and we talked about what we wanted in policy versus what we wanted as far, as far as, um, kind of the procedures. I think Jen and I could start working out the procedure of, this is what the account looks like, here is what the template for, um, you know, the, the post would look like, here's maybe an example or two of what we would expect a post to be, so that we could talk about that as part of continued business and make sure that we're aligned at that standpoint.
Yeah. Dr. Daley?
I'm happy to assist. Do we want to agree on what we try to get? Is it, like, in our school committee? Like, what, what do we try? You know, we usually have pretty good luck with that. North Reading's not, it's not like-
You mean what, what, like-
Springfield or something?
What the username is, or?
Yeah.
I'm hoping we can get North Reading School Committee.
Yeah.
Okay. And are we, are we trying for Facebook only, Instagram? I don't know what other social media ones we need to be on?
I think Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter are X, is what we were thinking.
Yeah. Are there's anything else beyond that?
Blue Sky, TikTok.
We will not be-
MySpace.
Unless Scott wants a TikTok, which I would love to see.
I said, I was-
Snap Face, what did Bill Belichick use to name?
Um, okay, so the major, May three and then, yeah, North Reading School-
Oh, we always adjust as, as trends change and, and different, I mean, I don't know, Jeff, but you have social media presence. I don't know, do you think, is it, I mean, is it really X and Meta? Are those the two that we, you think would be good starting point?
I would start small.
Yeah.
You know?
And I know both of those allow you to do what we need to do, which is be able to post and disable comments on our account, right, which would still allow it to be shared amongst the community. So, I think that meets the objectives. I'm not familiar with any of the other services enough to know.
I, I would not go any further than those two. In fact, I would probably pick one. Start there, get it going, get into a habit, get into a rhythm, and then go from there.
You might want to, you might want to get the usernames at the same time, though.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah. I mean, I think, for example, tonight, I think there was so much information that Cynthia gave us that the public would like to know if they weren't tuning into the meeting.
Yeah. And I would, and I would, actually, I was gonna ask about that. Can you send that? I appreciated last time when you sent out the presentation to people afterwards that maybe couldn't, like, I think this would be a good presentation to send out to the community as well. You do a blog or whatever and, and send it out, and then, school committee could just take segments of that, but also link back to.
It's helpful with the video, too, so I can try to link that.
Right.
Very good.
But just the PowerPoint, I thought was really good. But, yeah, okay, so you want, you guys want to come up with some policies and then get the names and, or get the accounts? Dr. Daley?
Yeah, that again, that's something I can-
Okay.
Do, but it's also, that's a good thing for the school committee account, just to send a link to your own meeting sometimes.
Yeah.
Just to say, here it is. It's like-
Yeah.
Handing it to someone as opposed, and you could say, you know, from six forty-five to eight was the presentation.
Yeah.
Tune in.
We got to prepare for an hour and fifteen minutes of this?
I, I told them. I said, you expect it to be at least two and a half hours.
Yeah, there you go. We care, so.
Well, I saw the, all of the one agenda topics. I was, I was, yeah.
There you go. Okay. Any other discussion on the social media presence? Okay, moving on, school committee professional development goal. Any updates on that, then?
So, really, no, outside of, I, I do an email into Alicia to double check on, on cost for M A S C, but then, based on this discussion, too, that you, we may want to consider, especially if special education is, is a target.
Yeah.
Do we even consider looking, you know, I know we were initially saying M A S C type training, but maybe we want, we might want to consider going outside of that, because they're going to be very focused on policy, budget. And I think that's a very important topic for the understanding, but do we want to try to marry that with maybe some of the more fundamental learning from, from Cynthia or elsewhere?
Right. Well, I, I want to talk about M A S C and say, like, our, our Director of Student Services would be interested in participating as well, potentially, if you wanted to. And then, yeah, I mean, and we could, you could even promote it, I mean, if it's gonna be a public meeting, we could promote it to special education, that as the CPAC group or whatever. I mean, yeah.
That certainly wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. Be a good, be a good thing to do.
Yeah, that'd be a great way to get people, maybe, uh, more aware of CPAC, too, with this change of leadership.
Right. Well, because the, the other, the other problem is, this is like, sort of like in law school, they, they teach you, they can't, don't teach you any specific law, because you might be practicing in different jurisdictions. The same thing happens here, where they can talk generally about what state law requires and, but they don't know the individual challenges or programs that we have in the district. And so, marrying the hypothetical, you know, theoretical and state laws with the specifics would be, I think, a good way to do it, because otherwise, we're gonna hear all this stuff from the state law, and then we're gonna go and ask what, what's happened here, and then we're gonna be kind of on, on our own path that maybe doesn't work here because of what, something we don't know about, so, yeah.
So, then, based on that, are you guys, should we reach, reach, I could reach back out to her about cost, about an in-person, potentially an open meeting here?
Right. Yeah. I'm seeing, and then overnight times and schedules and open that. Perfect. Thank you.
December nineteenth at eight P M.
At December twenty-fourth? December twenty-fourth, right? No else has any other meetings, right?
The heat will be turned down by then for the, we don't want to do that.
Okay. We're done with all the continued business. That was a lot quicker. Uh, routine matters. No minutes at this time?
None at this time.
No budget updated this time?
None at this time.
Staffing? You have two or three?
A couple of things to share.
Four?
We have officially hired a full-time school nurse at the bachelor school, replacing the retirement of Ms. Reska. So, Elizabeth Steele, who was our floater nurse, is now going to be the school nurse.
So, that is my one question. Do we not have a floater nurse now, or are we replacing the floater nurse part-time?
We're, we're replacing a point five floater nurse.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, we, we-
Congratulations, Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Love to see you.
Do not do without those roles, and so, that is continuing. Uh, Antonio Taylor, a paraprofessional special, special education at the Hood School. Mary Shannon is a paraprofessional general. Again, these are all replacing existing, uh, people who have stepped down for one reason or another. And Ms. Carrie Anne Moore, who was a paraprofessional in the district, has worked very hard to, um, to, to earn all her proper credentialing, is now, she's been serving as a long-term sub-teacher, special education. She's now officially a special education teacher. So, that's, uh, I'm very proud of whenever we're able to grow our own. We have really talented paraprofessionals. We're able to put them into our, our teaching ranks. And this is really an initiative statewide to encourage more pairs to become teachers. We've got a great pipeline here in North Reading, and so, this is just another example. Parallel here, as I mentioned, Ms. Reska is retiring in December as a school nurse at Bachelor School. Uh, and Ms. Julie Brady has, um, has left us, um, as a paraprofessional in special education at the middle school. And then, the coaching appointments, I just have the list. I'm not going to go through all of them here. Michael Leiden is indicated as, he's a new coach to the basketball program. I believe everyone else is a returning physician here that's noted on the list.
Yes.
Any questions?
None for me. We don't ask a lot of questions, Dr. Daley. Um, bids and donations. I think we had one, Mr. Friedman?
Sure. Uh, hold on one sec. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of one thousand four hundred from the Bachelor Parent Organization to be used toward the Winter Games. Anyone?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Will the roll call vote? Jeff?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Uh, Jen?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Pass is five zero. There's only one. Thank you. No grants, no overnight trips?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates. We had policy subcommittee. Anything more than what we just looked at?
Uh, no, just going over more about the recess policy, which will go back to the K through twelve action team.
Sounds good. You guys are very active. That's great. Uh, subcommittee schedule. Finance planning team, our meeting December nineteenth. We are doing, I am working December nineteenth, eight fifteen A M., though.
I was waiting on them just for fun.
Policy subcommittee is December seventeenth at noon. Athletic subcommittee, January fifteenth at twelve thirty. Fine arts subcommittee, December eleventh at three fifteen.
We actually did have a fire station subcommittee meeting tonight.
Oh, nice.
And for anyone who's wondering, if you go on the town website and click on the fire station update, they actually have a PowerPoint that shows why we need a new fire station.
Yeah.
I think it's really interesting, and there will be an opportunity to ask questions about the process.
Is there any timetable on that?
Not yet.
You would share it now, really?
Not yet.
Okay.
Is that it? Is that the name of the committee, the fire station?
It's-
There's the master planning committee and then the fire station-
Subcommittee?
Subcommittee of the master planning.
Should we add that as, as, as something? We can add that in?
We could do what? You want to just do other?
We have, we have a member as a part of that, right? Is that?
Yeah, I'd go get sworn in.
Yeah.
Do you want to just put on other ones, too, or whatever, because that, that don't meet as regularly?
Yeah.
Like, for example, CPAC, I could probably update on, because I'm, I think I'm the appointed liaison still.
You are.
I'm pro liaison to CPAC, and so, as Mrs. Conant mentioned, when, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds were interested in maybe helping out, they just wanted a meeting, and so I joined that meeting with, um, Miss Conant, Mrs. Massaco, and, um, the Reynolds and, and Mrs. Buston, so we kind of just talked through things there. But, yeah, so maybe we just add, like, any other, and then we could say, anything else that comes up, because these are the ones that I think are more regular that we're putting here, but, yeah, just to share.
Thank you.
Um, administrative report, Dr. Daley?
Just briefly, I wanted to share-
We still couldn't get, I couldn't get that again last night. I don't know if the link was just-
It's open now.
Maybe, maybe didn't have it. Sorry about that. Um, administrative report is sharing out this week, we were talking about Computer Science Education Week and the Hour of Code. Just wanted to share something that Dr. Downs, the Director of Digital Learning, shared out with staff this week, talking about things we can do around the Hour of Code, Computer Science Education Week. Um, so, we're very excited. We have a lot of teachers that will engage with some of these activities. You can follow, um, online and see some of the activities that are going to be tagged, and also some different programs that are throughout the schools. Um, and then, the, uh, as a principal search, I mentioned last time that we were getting closer. Mr. Friedman is on our, uh, committee, so I thank you. That was a, a difficult process to get our team together. A difficult decision, a great process. Um, but Mr. Friedman is, is going to be the school committee representative. We have interviews starting tomorrow, and then again on Thursday. We're interviewing, we have nine candidates, um, that we are interviewing.
So, we had nineteen candidates.
There's twenty total.
Okay.
We're interviewing nine.
Okay.
There were twenty, um, twenty, twenty applicants.
Who decided to go from twenty to nine? Was that your, your decision? The nine that you thought?
The-
I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not questioning, I'm just wondering.
Cynthia, uh, Conant, Morgan Soris, and I reviewed the applications along with Dr. O'Connell, and we, we got it from the twenty.
And you got it done, right? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was difficult getting it to nine in some ways. There were some that, um, maybe didn't have the right licensure or, or different pieces, but there were, there were a lot of good candidates. We feel we have a good representative sample of candidates, um, in the mix.
And then, did you get any, I, I saw you sent out the thing about the, about the naming committee as well, about the naming group. Did you, have you gotten some applicants on that or not?
We do. We do. Um, I will share that out. I believe it's the athletic subcommittee that's going to be looking at that.
Yeah, that's what we said, the athletic subcommittee, we're gonna be the two members from the school committee on that, but.
So, yeah, we have, uh, about six people that responded, three or so of those. So, So I think it's up to nine. I don't think it has to be nine, but there's pretty good representation. There's been a few nominations of names.
Okay.
Some repeat, multiple repeat nominations of the original without us even putting it out there.
Okay.
Um, and then some others. So I think we're in a good place to
Okay.
make sure that's clear. And I was clear in that too, the two, and I will send out reminders about that. I get the time of year's not great. I'll send out a reminder now, another reminder. I think we said that that group would meet in January, um, and then we'd make the decisions. You know, but by naming the fields, I think that puts it in people's heads, like who we might be talking about, like a softball field. So probably some softball people might want to be involved.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, correspondence at this time? And future business, we have a meeting on January eighth.
I don't believe we've settled on a time.
Oh, we were, we were debating about having a meeting on January eighth about, uh, all boards meeting. So we'll keep everybody updated on that.
Pretty sure that's going forward, but I don't know that we know the time.
Be the evening. So I don't know what time evening. So, um, January thirteenth, regular meeting here, and then January twenty-seventh.
Probably won't make the twenty-seventh, I'm going to be traveling.
Okay.
Yeah, we already are into the, uh, first of our five school presentations, believe it or not.
There you go.
By January.
Happy holidays to everybody. Um, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Let's do a roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Pass is five zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.